Building, you know, those kinds of things so that all schools are part of this BPS, um Build BPS moving forward.
Yeah, the one thing we know Ms. Robinson is that we have a lot of buildings that need repair. And everybody basically should be on that list just about other than a good handful of schools that are new within the last several years or renovated. Um, we announced nine new projects in May and we promised to come back in late October to the school committee with a more comprehensive list. And so the team is doing that analysis now, um, and we are planning on moving out with engagement with the communities. Um, part of that was um announcing some of the closures of our middle schools. So that we could uh have adequate swing space because we just don't have adequate swing space to be able to do major projects. In many schools because it's so disruptive. Um, so we have to create the swing space so that we can do the projects. Um, because students would be displaced while the construction was going on. Um, so uh we'll be back um near the end of October, beginning of November to be able to speak with you more about um a more comprehensive plan around Bill PPS.
Alrighty, thank you. Um, are there any other questions before we move on? If not, again, um, thanks to the whole team for your report. And we look forward to the next update, which I'm sure we'll have next meeting. Thank you so much. Our next report is our annual wellness policy update. At this time, I'd like to invite Jill Carter, BPS Assistant Superintendent of Health and Wellness. Marika Lear, Director of Wellness Policy and Promotions, BPS Office of Health and Wellness. And Dr. Jennifer Lo, Medical Director of Boston Public Health Commission, to please present the report. First, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
I am so proud of Ms. Carter and the work that they are doing uh around health and wellness. And I'm excited to see her report. The team has really rallied, um, especially during this year of pandemic. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Carter and um just give her big kudos and thanks for all that they do. And thank you Ms. Low again, Dr. Low again, for um always just putting us first and and being such a great partner.
Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. I'm Jill Carter, I'm Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Health and Wellness. And I'm here in my role as the co-chair of the District Wellness Council. The superintendent-appointed advisory committee that develops, recommends, reviews, and advises on health-related district policies. The District Wellness Council is also tasked with evaluating and reporting on the implementation of the wellness policy. Tonight, we are happy to welcome the new uh school committee members and excited to present the school year nineteen twenty District Wellness Policy Annual Report. And I apologize if I'm speaking a little bit too fast. Um, I will try to slow down. But um Marika, if you would like to share the screens shortly and get our presentation up. Um, I'm joined uh by my co-chair, Dr. Jennifer Lo, Medical Director of the Boston Public Health Commission. And Marika Lear, our Director of Wellness Policy and Promotions from the Health and Wellness Office. I would also like to recognize and thank last year's District Wellness Council members and subcommittee co-chairs who helped to gather this large amount of data. And I'd also like to thank the Health and Wellness Office Policy and Data Team that compiled the data and wrote the report on behalf of the District Wellness Council. I'd also like to thank School Committee Chair Ms. Jerry Robinson for her participation and input as a District Wellness Council member. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lo to kick us off.
Um, good evening again, everyone. I'm glad to be here for this second presentation. Um, I just want to thank you to Jill Carter and Marika Lear for inviting me to present. Um, the partnership between BPS and BPHC is obviously has been spoken about um much during this presentation. We are very much appreciative of this partnership um in terms of of setting the policy for what is best for our youth of our city. Uh, this particular, the District Wellness Council is also um supported by Anne McQ. She is Director of the Child Adolescent and Family Health Bureau at the Health Commission. And she's the co-chair of the District Wellness Council Policy Subcommittee. Unfortunately, she cannot be with us today, but she has spent a lot of time um concerned about uh the health of our youth. So this annual report was completed in June and uses data from school year nineteen to twenty gathered from a variety of sources across the district, which are listed in the appendices of this slide deck. What the report allows us to do is to look at the metrics in tandem and discuss their connection to and impact on student health outcomes. Due to the comprehensive nature of the metrics in the reports and the need for cross-departmental and stateholder engagement, it requires four-year to compile and synthesize all the information. This approach allows us to monitor progress over time. But it does mean we are reporting on the status of the policy implementation at the end of 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 SY twenty twenty-one. Four-year after the work was completed, reference a little bit more of the recent progress when possible. Federal and state law requires that BPS submit an annual report on the activities of the District Wellness Council and an assessment of the implementation of the wellness policy to the school committee and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We alternate between qualitative and quantitative annual assessments. This year's report is quantitative. After a brief introduction to the wellness policy and overview of the evaluation plan logic model, we'll review the key student health impacts that drive the policy, touch on some key outcomes for each policy area. Uh, and then present our overall assessment of our policy implementation progress. And lastly, we'll present the um to the council the recommendations to to the, I'm sorry, to the superintendent and the school committee will present the council's recommendations based on the policy. Jill?
Thank you. Students who are health literate, have access to healthcare and support services, and can freely and confidently practice health-promoting behaviors, can engage more readily in the process of learning. Our experience during this pandemic has reinforced our collective commitment to the BPS Health and Wellness Mission to actively promote the social, emotional, and physical health and wellness of all students to advance both their healthy development and readiness to learn. This mission aligns with the district's strategic vision to provide an equitable and excellent, well-rounded education that prepares every student for success in college, career, and life. If we create healthier and more welcoming and affirming schools through improved instruction, equitable access to programs, aligned school supports, and policy systems and environmental change, then we will reduce health inequities and improve student learning and well-being. This report provides us an opportunity to examine how we've measured up to our commitment to wellness policies and practices, to reflect on how we adapted to the challenges of COVID- nineteen pandemic, and to consider how we will expand what worked in order to help our schools return, recover, reimagine a better way forward. Next slide. The BPS Wellness Policy aligns with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the ASCD's whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model, also called the WISC model or simply the whole-child approach. The wellness policy is an umbrella policy that links all district health-related policies under the eight policy components listed here. Cultural proficiency, school food and nutrition promotion, comprehensive physical activity and physical education, comprehensive health education, healthy school environment or the physical environment, safe and supportive schools, which includes climate and culture, behavioral health, social, emotional learning, and student supports, health services, and staff wellness. Cultural proficiency stands as its own area within the policy to make explicit the commitment to culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and the connection to health equity and learning. And it is also woven throughout all the other policy areas. This is the district's policy guide or policy that guides culture and climate, support services, school physical environment, and classroom instruction related to physical, social, and emotional wellness. The policy was first passed in June two thousand six and was updated in twenty-nine, twenty thirteen, and again in twenty seventeen. This report illustrates how the health of BPS students and schools drives the work of various departments and offices to coordinate across all policy areas to provide support to schools and direct support to students. This work is informed by and engages community partners and families. We are using a collective impact approach. Next slide. The District Wellness Council conducted an overhaul of the monitoring and evaluation plan for the wellness policy in seventeen eighteen, based on feedback from council stakeholders and the school committee. Each policy subcommittee used a logic model to identify process outcomes and short-term, intermediate, and long-term impact measures. We worked with central office departments to identify metrics and data sources for each outcome. This is the second annual report where we have completed, that we have completed using the new monitoring and evaluation plan. We will be sharing the progress since the last quantitative report on school year, in school year seventeen eighteen. There are more metrics and dimensions of each policy area than we will have time to cover in this presentation. So we will hit on some of the key takeaways in each policy area, share our estimates of where we are in implementing the policy, and discuss some recommendations. On the slides, we will be showing you school year nineteen twenty data, and we will share updated information where we have it. Next slide, turn to Marika.
So um we begin with student health impacts that drive the need for this work framed by our four priority health issues. Asthma, obesity, sexual health, and mental health. The table on the right of this slide highlights key data points from BPS nursing data and the two thousand nineteen Boston Youth Risk Behavior Survey for the YRBS. On the right side of the table, we have color-coded the different policy areas that impact these health outcomes. The legend is at the top. I want to call your attention to the two policy areas that impact all four priority health areas. Cultural proficiency in the pink dot and comprehensive health education, the purple dot, because of the importance of health equity and health literacy on these health outcomes. So first, asthma, which is largely impacted by environmental factors as well as management of medication and healthcare coordination, impacts nearly one in five students. There were higher percentages of Asian, Latinx, Black, and multiracial students with asthma compared to white students. According to the CDC, the current prevalence of asthma across all states and territories is only nine point one percent among five to fourteen-year-olds and for seven point four percent among fifteen to nineteen-year-olds. Weight status is impacted by nutrition and physical activity as well as other social determinants of health. Nursing data shows that almost a quarter of students have a body mass index greater or equal to the ninety, ninety-fifth percentile compared to the national obesity prevalence data of nineteen point three percent. Our BPS data shows racial disparities in obesity similar to national data. The two thousand nineteen Boston Youth Risk Behavior Survey shows that fifteen percent of high school students got the recommended daily physical activity of sixty minutes or more per day significantly less, significantly statistically significantly less than students both statewide and nationally. Only twenty-five percent of high school students ate breakfast daily significantly less than students both statewide and nationally. Lastly, recommended fruit and vegetable consumption is low among high school students. In regards to sexual health, YRBS data shows that the percentage of high school students who have ever had sexual intercourse or are currently sexually active are statistically significantly decreased since nineteen ninety-three. And current prevalence is similar to state and national data. While this is good news, we are concerned that protective behaviors such as condom use and STD testing among sexually active youth remains low among our students. Lastly, the data related to mental health and well-being, which you can see is impacted by all our policy areas. There is a high prevalence of persistent sadness both among high schools and middle school students. And just over half of high school and middle school students express a connection to people at their schools. Among high school students, female students are statistically more likely to report persistent sadness compared to their male peers, which is forty-five percent versus twenty-five percent. And students that identify as lesbian, gay, or bisexual are more likely than their straight peers to report persistent sadness, which is fifty-nine percent versus thirty-one percent. We know these health outcomes will be impacted by the COVID pandemic, and we will be conducting the two thousand twenty-one YRBS in middle schools and high schools to collect data this fall. The wellness policy is designed to help improve these health outcomes through implementation of a whole-child approach. So the next four slides contain key takeaways from the nineteen twenty report by policy area and organized by whole-child elements. First, for whole-child culture and climate, we look at cultural proficiency, staff wellness, and social, emotional climate. We saw some improvements in these policy areas, but they still remain partially implemented. Training and expectations for culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and racial equity practices were being diffused throughout BPS and continue to be rolled out through this past year through examples like training on using the culturally responsive instructional observation protocol and the development of equity roundtables. According to the abbreviated Spring twenty twenty School Climate Survey, about half of students who responded thought learning sort, learning resources were not sufficiently culturally relevant, and their teachers did not encourage them to talk freely about differences and inequality. So we know there was a large percentage of students who are not feeling the impact of these efforts or seeing a change in staff teaching practices yet. Related to the engagement in wellness councils, only sixteen schools reported families participating in school wellness councils for schools with students. This is a big opportunity for growth in school wellness council, student, and family engagement. For staff wellness, according to our school health profile survey, nearly all school leaders agreed that their school actively supports staff members' social and emotional well-being. Yet only slightly more than half of schools report offering school-based programs to support, to support staff wellness. District or support and coordination of staff health and well-being is still developing and largely happening in siloed efforts across the district. We are excited about the emerging opportunities for district-level coordination efforts led by the superintendent's office in collaboration with the various departments involved in this work. Related to social, emotional climate, safe and supportive schools, eighty-eight percent of school leaders reported teachers using social, emotional learning strategies in the classroom. There was a decrease from school year seventeen eighteen in schools with bullying prevention liaisons and staff trained in bullying prevention and intervention. Thirty-nine percent of schools said no staff were trained. There was also a decrease in schools with expectant and parenting student policy liaisons. This year, the offices of Equity and Health and Wellness are working together to raise awareness of the policy and provide training for school-based liaisons. There was an increase in schools with gender and sexuality alliances, or GSAs. And last year, there was a number of supports for students rolled out by the new LGBTQ-plus student support manager position in the Office of Equity. Moving on to whole-child support services, in these areas, we can see how investments have improved implementation in these policy areas. For safe and supportive schools, the district has been investing in important mental health support service staff at schools, primarily social workers and some school psychologists. However, only twenty-six percent of schools were meeting or exceeding the recommended ratio for school psychologists in school year nineteen twenty. Most schools reported taking a multi-tiered systems of support approach and had a student support team. And we have improved, um, we have seen improved systems to identify and provide supports for students experiencing homelessness. Progress on coordinating the Hub School Pilot was made in school year nineteen twenty, and investments have been made to launch the Hub Schools Pilot in fourteen schools um for, for this upcoming school year. For health services, nearly all school buildings are now staffed with at least one uh school nurse. And there will be, then there was an increase seen in school health screenings in nineteen twenty. Ninety-one percent of students visiting the nurse returned to class for learning. We continue to struggle with immunization compliance for students. Thirty-two schools had immunization compliance below eighty-five percent. You heard earlier from Jenny Lobo-Lopes about all the good work that Health Services has been doing um to ensure the ongoing health and safety at our schools. Seventy-seven schools with students in grades six through twelve participated in the menstrual access pilot program. And the district is exploring opportunities for expanding this program, including improving access points by putting dispensers in bathrooms rather than only making the materials available through staff. And all high schools had active condom accessibility teams, and nearly all had received up-to-date training by the end of school year nineteen twenty. Now for some data on the whole-child physical environment and the investments and activities that have improved policy implementation in these areas. Um, you've heard a lot from Laura Benavides about school food and nutrition. One hundred percent of schools provided breakfast after the bell in nineteen twenty an increase from eighty-seven percent in school year seventeen eighteen. And Laura gave us an overview of the amazing advances through My Way Cafe to be able to provide bulk freshly-prepared onsite meal service. The FNS department continues to improve sourcing local foods and systems to plan and track meals at each school and continuously improve the cultural relevance of the meals. School leaders reported, um, however, school leaders did report a lack of communication and enforcement of practices to create healthy uh food environments through the, throughout the school, such as following nutrition guidelines for classroom parties, fundraisers, and school stores and vending machines. For the healthy school environment, seventy-eight percent of school leaders reported reviewing their school environmental audit to identify areas for improvement. Regarding policy communication in the schools, seventy-three percent of school leaders reported informing their staff about great, the green cleaner pro, policy. And ninety percent informing staff on how to record pest sightings in order to improve integrated pest management. In school year nineteen twenty, BPS Sustainability Office trained four hundred custodians on sustainability, environment, health, and safety issues. And BPS Sustainability continues to build programming and support for schools and the district to move forward, move towards greater environmental sustainability and a healthier learning environment. Investments were secured to improve access to tap water for drinking at all schools. In between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-five, one hundred percent of schools will receive varying levels of first-time installations or upgrades to existing systems. We'll now hand it over to Jill to finish um sharing key takeaways.
Lastly, on the key takeaways are the ones related to the whole-child instruction. Comprehensive health education has not seen progress in policy implementation across the district. Only twenty percent of middle and high schools had a lead health education teacher certified, licensed, or endorsed by the state to teach health education, which has not improved since school year seventeen eighteen. Nearly forty percent of schools with grades pre-K to five did not offer any health instruction to students. Two in five schools serving middle and high school grades did not require students to take any health education course. Fewer than twenty percent of schools across the district followed the minimum required health education policy. Thirty-three percent of elementary schools meant the minimum requirement. Twelve percent of schools serving grades six to eight required two semesters taught by a licensed health ed teacher. Eight percent of schools serving grades nine through twelve required one semester taught by a licensed health education teacher. Physical education and physical activity has seen marked improvements over the past ten years. But the sticking points remain in middle and high school grades. All schools with grades pre-K to eight were staffed to provide at least forty-five minutes of weekly PE. And ninety percent reported offering at least forty-five minutes of weekly PE for each grade as the policy requires. However, only one in three high schools were staffed to meet the policy requirements. And fifty-eight percent reported offering at least one semester of PE in each grade as required. Additionally, only forty-two percent of schools with grades six to eight provided at least twenty minutes per day of recess. Seventy-five percent of schools containing pre-K to five have at least twenty minutes of recess, though all students in those grades have some amount of recess weekly. Twenty-two percent of schools were still withholding PA as punishment despite the changes made. despite the changes made to the code of conduct in the fall of twenty nineteen. Overall, forty-eight percent of schools were meeting all the minimum physical activity requirements for all grades. Finally, social emotional learning. Starting in school year nineteen twenty and into the past year, BPS K to twelve transformative cell competencies were being rolled out through the district and embedded into health ed, phys ed, and the arts. In spring of school year nineteen twenty, there was a strong district-wide commitment from school leaders to support student cell. However, only thirty-three percent of school leaders strongly agreed their staff had received adequate training on the BPS cell standards. During this past year, cell instruction and practice were expected to be a focus for reopening. This will continue as we go back in school year twenty-one, twenty-two. So what is the big picture on how we are doing in meeting our commitment to the wellness policy? This figure shows that we improved implementation in almost all policy areas between school year seventeen eighteen and nineteen twenty. And there were continued improvements this past year for food and nutrition, healthy school environment, and safe and supportive schools. The district has also placed extreme focus and attention on improving cultural proficiency efforts in all of the policy areas. But we do hope to see more engagement of students and families in the school wellness councils this year. Only three areas did not show any improvement. Comprehensive health ed, high school physical education, and wellness councils, though the wellness council council policy remains mostly implemented. However, health education and high school physical education are minimally implemented. The written annual report contains recommendations for each policy. However, for this presentation, we want to highlight the areas that have remained stagnant and have not received investments. We are optimistic that the ESAR funds and the MasCor investments will be able to support these gaps. First, comprehensive health education remains the most inequitably implemented area of the policy. This is an equity issue. Our schools are not adequately able to serve our students when it comes to improving health literacy of those students. We want our students to graduate being able to set health goals, navigate their own and their family's healthcare, build strong relationships, and maintain their health and wellness throughout their lives. This past school year, we saw just how necessary it is to be able to understand health information and health communication and make health decisions that impact not only individual but our whole community. Our students are not consistently and equitably receiving skills-based, standards-based, comprehensive health ed during their time at BPS. The District Wellness Council recommends that BPS make it a priority to increase the number of licensed health education teachers teaching in grades six through twelve and the number of trained licensed teachers teaching health ed in pre-K to five. We also recommend improving master schedule planning to include time for health ed. Physical education and physical activity in school help build physical literacy among students and have an impact on physical and mental well-being. Because of the data specifically on recess for middle grades and physical education in high schools, the District Wellness Council recommends increasing time in the schedule for recess for middle grades as well as training and resources to support to support schools in managing recess for these grades. We also recommend increasing staffing for high school PE and improving schools' master schedule planning to include time for PE in grades nine through twelve. Lastly, we know that social emotional development in students is critical for learning and is critical for recovery. We also know that building adult social emotional learning skills that are grounded in culturally and linguistically sustaining practices are critical for making sure that staff are able to build long-term trusting relationships with students and create classrooms that are gauging, engaging, and inclusive. Given the data we collected pre-pandemic and the concerns our students and every member of our district and school communities have for returning and recovering from the global pandemic, the District Wellness Council recommends strengthening tier-one social emotional service support, sorry, through investments in transformative cell professional development and instructional coaching so that all staffs at schools have adequate training on BPS social emotional learning competencies and can integrate those into all classrooms throughout the school. We also recommend improving coordination and alignment across central office divisions to strengthen a tier-one multi-tiered system of support approach through a district strategic plan for cell. This strength-based approach, improving whole child instruction develops student knowledge. Skill, I'm sorry, develops students' knowledge, skills, and self-efficacy to engage in health behaviors. Improving and increasing access to whole child instruction that is culturally responsive is anti-racist policy implementation. It develops the skills students need to care for themselves, their families, and their communities. I'll turn this over to Dr. Lowe.
BPS is using a collective impact approach, an intentional way of working together and sharing information. This will improve wellness, which requires five conditions to be in place. Common agenda, shared measurement system, mutually reinforcing activities, continuous communications, and a backbone structure. Through the BPS wellness policy, we have established a common understanding of the impact of wellness on learning. We've established a shared vision for change and a commitment to coordinate across the district to improve wellness. The policy recognizes the need for differentiated approaches to implement each policy area. These mutually reinforcing activities must be coordinated through a joint plan of action. The District Wellness Council and its eight subcommittees, coordinated and convened by the Office of Health and Wellness, serve as the backbone structure. Though the District Wellness Council has established an evaluation plan with agreed-upon metrics to measure improvement on policy implementation, there remain challenges to data collection. We must also continue to improve communications at every level in the district and build an internal system to break through siloed work. So to improve the collective impact based on the data collected for the reports and the current state of policy implementation overall, the council recommends the following structural and process improvements. Continue to improve communication of the policy and outcomes to district leaders, schools, students, and families so that there is a common understanding of what is required and how school communities can support the health and well-being of students and staff. Number two, continue to strengthen District Wellness Council and subcommittees and improve data systems for evaluating the wellness policy. And number three, to continue to develop strategic plans and benchmarks for district departments related to the wellness policy and create an internal BPS structure to support collaboration across divisions.
So finally, this work takes a team at the district level and at the school level. It takes a whole school, whole community, whole child approach. We are excited that the draft of the ESAR II Plan touches on many of our recommendations, and we look forward now to answering your questions or taking your comments. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you all for the reporting for your incredible work on behalf of our students. Yes, I agree with you with the ESAR report and return to school. This couldn't be better time, so I look forward to hearing questions and comments of our committee members. So I'll open it up to the committee now. Please raise your hand if you have a question. Dr. Coleman.
Great, thank you for a wonderful, comprehensive, well-structured report. And I want to lift, I want to lift a couple of things up for accommodation and also make a request that's both to you and the district. So first off, creating that logic model and laying it out is a gift to us. It makes it clear where, what you're trying to do, where you're going, and how you know you're going to get there, and it's phenomenally useful. You know, people permit, I wish that all our reports from all our departments were structured that way. And I'll be very clear about that because it allows us to really identify where it's going. And secondly, I will lift up your honesty about your outcomes. You're imperfect. You're not there yet, and you're putting the data upfront saying where the progress is and what you're working on, and that is also very useful so we can begin to think about that. So one of the things that I would like, and that conversations about this in the district is I really appreciate the percentages you shared and that graph on where you're progressing and not progressing towards the end was incredibly useful. But as you know, one of the conversations we're having is trying to understand this theory of gap that we know we have these gaps, we look at our data, and we see these differences demographically. And your well, your position to, I think, lead us forward in the next step. And what I would ask you to start thinking about is what does good look like, right? When do you know you've reached a criterion reference? I mean, we all want to be a hundred percent. I wish I had been a hundred percent and got and go to Stanford's undergrad, you know? We all want those things, but I was still good enough, right? I did well enough, I'm still, so what is that criterion reference we have in each one of your categories? So that we know what that looks like. And then how do we identify our gaps by, by race, class, language, learning needs? How do we then identify the gaps so that when you go back to redesign the next year and have your activities set up, you begin to address some of the way you're addressing those gaps? And that, that process will allow us to be very clear. I know how painful it is for all of us in the community to see the way in which lots of our kids are struggling, and then they look, listen to us in these meetings and say, look how well we're doing. And we don't have a language, a shared language about really demonstrating how the hard work we're doing doesn't always pay off. And I think you've done a great job of being honest about that. But having what is the criterion at which point we as a community says we're doing good enough? We still want to do better. We still want kids to succeed and do very well, but here we are. And here's where we're not, so let's, we have to redo our resources. So that would be, that would be one of requests, kind of a reporting structure request that I would like, I'd like you to consider. And you're, you're as well set up to do that as any unit in the district. And I wish every other unit would kind of look at you and say, oh, how, what can we do to replicate that? And then finally, the one.
Slow down, Dr. Coleman.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I was getting very excited, so I definitely did night for an old guy. That's pretty good. So the last thing I would like, the other piece that you're on the verge of doing, and I know, I know many of you, you know this conversation. The other thing that's happening in the district is the implementation of MYCAP cross for all students. And as that rolls out, where does that connect with your data? I mean, I think, and do this, one, do the systems talk to each other? But as you have MYCAP and everyone, every child has their comprehensive academic plan all laid out, how does the data from that process, which is related to MasCor accomplishments, relate to your data? And how do, how do you speak to each other? And I think, and I know that one of the things that we're charging the superintendent with and evaluating her very sharply on is bringing coherence to the district and a sense of cooperation and collaboration as used as the whole team. And this is an area where you can make her look good by linking those together. So that's it. So one, logic model, wonderful. Second, what is our criteria so that we can really identify where our gaps are? And third, how does your work relate to the progress we're making on the MYCAP? And how do they talk to each other? Thank you very much for a great, you know, kept me awake. So this is, this is a very useful thing.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I've taken copious notes, and we will definitely work. I know that you were really instrumental in encourages, encouraging us to go with the logic model. And so we will, we will go back and consider these and see how we can make improvements for next time.
You're going to ruin my family's life. If someone actually listened to me and did something, and I expect that other parts of our life, this is, you got to be careful here.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Mercer?
So mine's more of a comment as well. It's really just emphasized the importance and also the need of some kind of physical activity for the high school. I love the fact that you guys kept bringing that up as one emphasized that point because even back when we had PE, we used to have a lot of fun and we used to be excited. A lot of kids would skip their other classes just to somehow sneak into another grades PE. It was to be fun when the older kids came in, but it's like, if it's to the point where they're skipping classes and trying to sneak into PE, that shows the importance and the love for physical activity. Even now that I'm a high schooler going to senior year, I'm seeing the need for going outside. And I, every time I get to go outside, it's like a treat. It's like when you get your favorite ice cream or favorite candy or treat for the first time in forever. It feels so nice. And this pandemic, when we got to go outside and eat for lunch, it just felt so nice. Sometimes it'd be a little late to our last period of class because of it, to savor in that fresh air and just the outside and being outdoors. But yeah, it's amazing, and I think it really should be put into everybody's schedule to have at least, at least thirty minutes outdoors every day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say that, Ms. Mercer, that you will have just cheered our whole phys ed department and team by saying that people were sneaking into physical education. That is really fabulous. Thank you very much for sharing.
Other members' comments? None? I just, you know, I want to thank you for this. I, the hardest part for me is saying, you know, I'm glad that we are tracking it, but I'm sad that we are failing. We're failing our students in lots of areas, and I'm hoping that schools will receive the information. schools will receive the information back as to how they are doing. I know they answered it, but it would be great if people were not, you know, were getting back their results and also understanding how their colleagues are or aren't. And as we think about the, you know, the achievement gaps and other gaps to recognize that our lack of attention to this area continues to create gaps. And as we are going back to reopening, how do we get the commitment? I know people are all talking about social emotional learning. How are they going to actually do it? So it's not just more talk, but that we actually begin to see these numbers change in all, at all grade levels for all of our students.
So Ms. Robinson, I just wanted to comment on your, we do, we create a wellness profile report for every school. And it's not, they, all school leaders and phys ed teachers and health ed teachers, they answer a lot of different questions for the profile survey. But we give them a report back of a few key indicators in each of the policy areas based on what they've told us and some other data that we collect centrally. And we share where they're at with the policy and then what the average is for the rest of the district. And we give that to them in the fall so that they can use that to create a wellness action plan. And we do get a lot of positive feedback from school leaders that that's really helpful. So, so thank you for bringing that up and allowing me to share that. I think to your, to your question about social emotional learning and, and also just improvements overall, I just want to recognize that we as a district have made great strides in a lot of the policy areas. So I ended with the parts where we haven't done so well, which is where we called out those recommendations. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, thanks to the superintendent, thanks to the school committee, thanks to all the school leaders that, and to all the other central office departments that are working so hard, we have really made great, we have made strides. I do hope that we can see improvements in health education and high school phys ed and social emotional learning. And specific to social emotional learning, I do think it takes a tier one approach where there's trainings for all school, all teachers, all classroom teachers, so that they know what our social emotional learning competencies are so that they can integrate those into all academic subject areas. And so that's one thing is training for, for the teachers. We did make great strides on that last year. And we will continue to offer professional development in that, this school year. We also required last year that social emotional learning practices be threaded throughout the week and throughout the day. And that can include welcoming practices into every class and lesson plan. We gave lots of examples and we have lots of tools to support schools in doing that. We know we need to continue doing that. And then finally, we integrated, or we increased the integration of social emotional learning into health education, physical education, and the arts. And created enormous amount, there are scope and sequences for both health education, physical education, and the arts are inclusive of the social, emotional, and mental health elements. And actually had a lot of new lessons designed to really focus on community building and those relationship skills right at the beginning of the school year. So we'll continue with that and collaborating with the arts department and others, we hope, in academics to bring the social emotional skills into every classroom. And of course, we need to, we're really grateful for all the social workers and other, the family liaisons that are going to help with the tier two and tier three elements of supporting on social emotional well-being.
Yeah. I guess this question's more to you, Dr. Cassellius, as you, again, you begin to roll out for Mass Core. Is physical, I mean, health education part of that sequence? And so the fact that we still have very limited numbers of certified health educators at the high school level, will that improve as part of the rollout of Mass Core?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that is one of the priorities to help with the Mass Core and having students achieve it. One of the barriers that school leaders, high school leaders have shared is that they don't have gymnasiums at all of our high schools. And so obviously, facilities is a barrier. So we are looking at other creative ways for students to be able to get their PE. And, you know, making sure that they are staffed in order to meet the Mass Core requirements for PE and health is critical and important. The MYCAP, as Dr. Coleman spoke about, is one way to ensure when students have individualized learning plans to, and academic four-year planning guides, that they actually are scheduled into these courses as part of their graduation requirements. That's going to be a really important piece of tracking. As you know, right now, curricular decisions are decisions made at the school level. And there's a lot of work still yet to do around bringing coherence to our academic program. And I'm encouraged by, you know, Mr. Eccleston's work and what he's going to be doing with the team to work with our Chief of Schools, Cory Harris, on building coherence with the school leaders.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And we'll bring, we'll bring that back to all of you. I'm taking copious notes.
Alrighty, thank you. Any last questions or comments? If not, thank you again and the team for all of this hard work. And we thank you and look forward to moving forward in this next school year. Good evening. Our final report this evening is the nomination of School Committee Member, Anani DeRusio, to serve as co-chair of the committee's English Language Learners Task Force. Mr. DeRusio will fill the leadership role formerly held by Dr. Lorna Rivera, who stepped down from the committee last June. The ELL Task Force serves as a monitoring body and thought partner that supports BPS in addressing the needs of our increasingly multicultural and multilingual district. Nearly one in every two students speaks a language other than English at home, and students come from 139 different countries. Mr. DeRusio is a former BLS EL student. He attended Bradley Elementary, Yumana Academy, and Boston Latin School, and went on to receive a BA from Harvard College and a JD from Washington and Lee University School of Law in Lexington, Virginia. He credits his mother, a widow who immigrated to East Boston from Columbia, with instilling in him a deep appreciation of the transformative power of education. Mr. DeRusio serves as the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs and General Counsel of the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center, amongst the largest health centers in the nation with over 100,000 patients and 1,400 staff. He resides with his family in East Boston, where he is very involved in the community. I'm confident that Mr. DeRusio's personal and professional experience will make him a valuable addition to the ELL Task Force. I look forward to discussing his nomination at tonight's meeting and request that the committee take action on this matter on September 1st. I want to thank Mr. DeRusio for stepping up to take on this important. Mr. DeRusio, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I very much appreciate your confidence in nominating me. As I said to our, our co-chair on the task force, Suzanne Lee, I hope that, that my efforts will contribute, you know, to the really important goals. I especially want to focus on the intersection of, of ELL and then special education. That's an area that I've been interested in. And I see every day at the East Boston Health Center, the, we have one of the largest pediatric departments and we take care of a lot of kids in the BPS system from Latin America, from North Africa, and see a lot of, you know, the intersection of these issues. So I hope that I can contribute over the next months and also draw on the expertise and experiences of my colleagues here on the school committee as well to raise the importance of all these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
I want to thank you for stepping up and it's really a fantastic opportunity for us to have your broad experience to come lead this group and then, and the interest both inside and outside and working with the broad community. So thank you for your willingness and look forward to working with you on this.
Wonderful. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to thank Mr. DeRusio, as Dr. Coleman said as well, for his willingness to serve as co-chair of this very important task force. You know, and particularly for our newer members, the, the school committee does have a number of task forces that many of us serve on, as well as innovation school committees, building committees. There's a whole range of ways that the chair will ask you to get involved. And I'm delighted that Mr. DeRusio is stepping up to co-chair this very important task force. We take very seriously the work of all of our task forces and they end up being a considerable amount of time beyond these committee meetings as well. So thank you, Mr. DeRusio, for your willingness to do so. And I applaud your comments about the intersection of EL students along with students with disabilities. That'll be interesting, the work on that as well. So thank you. And I look forward to supporting the chair's recommendation next week.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other comments? If not, okay. Well, thank you again, Mr. DeRusio. The committee looks forward to taking action on this, your nomination at our September 1st meeting. We'll now move on to public comments on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
All right. Well, thank you. New business? Yes, Mr. O'Neill?
Madam Chair, may I just ask, we have two new members, but one in particular, we're providing interpretation services for, for the first meeting. And I just want to ask, you know, publicly how it went, both for the materials and the interpretation services.
Gracias por preguntar eso. Para mí recibí toda la traducción quiero decirle al equipo que muchas gracias. Ha sido muy bueno. Lina, Zuliván, yo sé que ha sido un trabajo fuerte, pero ellas están haciendo un trabajo increíble. Quiero felicitarlas y decirle que estoy muy impresionado de que tan rápido ellas hayan contestado y enviado y me hayan enviado las informaciones en español. Oh, oh, I, yo necesito irme.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neill. I really appreciate it. I did receive all the information and the translations. Thank you very much for checking. Thank you so much to the team for the proactive work that Lina and Ms. Sullivan did. I really appreciate all the help that you've been providing.
Sé que es un poco, sé que va a ser un poco loco, un poco difícil porque son muchos documentos para mí que hablo más español, pero sé que también dentro de mis hombros tengo una gran responsabilidad porque tengo que dejar un camino hecho para las futuras generaciones. Así que Lina, Elena, no sé si te agradezco mucho y a Zuliván y a todos ustedes del comité por aperturar, por decir, abrir sus mentes, sus corazones y su oído del español.
Lina and Ms. Sullivan, thank you very much. Thank you very much to the entire committee for opening your ears, your hearts. And everything, and this opportunity to me is going to be a little crazy, of course, at the beginning. There are multiple documents that I'm going to have to check considering my dominant language, it is in Spanish. But I am very aware and cognizant of the responsibilities that I do have on my shoulders for this purpose. Thank you very much to all for everything.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, thoughts? One thing, I know that we will be sending out a Google poll in the next week. We would like to have a retreat before September. And I know August is becoming very busy, so look for a Google poll from us next week to try to set up some time when we can even potentially maybe meet in person or retreat. Yes. So anyway, that will conclude our business for tonight. Again, thank you to our new members. You've got a late night meeting, not one of our record late nights, but we're going to stop before 11:00. So I thank you. And before we close, Ms. Lopera, how was this meeting for you as well as a first meeting?
Thank you for asking, Madam Chair. It's honestly, it is incredible to hear one's own mother tongue being spoken in one of these spaces. So I, I am right there with Ms. Polanco García. I'm right behind Ms. Polanco García in support of her and knowing that this means a lot for, for so many of our families. And this is just one step forward. So this has been amazing. Long night, but amazing.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, everyone. And that concludes our business for this evening. And our next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 1st. We're planning to return to an in-person hybrid meeting that will allow the public to continue to participate remotely. We will share more details on the committee's webpage as the dates get closer. So if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We don't get to vote on this return?
Not yet. We'll talk about it when we have our retreat.
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the rule?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, and good night, everyone. Have a good week.
Thank you.
Mr. DeRusio?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Lopera?
Yes, one of the most.
Ms. Polanco García?
Yes, and good night.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. Good night.